Is this one yours?
Yeah, I forgot about that, thank you. What? Because I took all your orders.
Well, I mean, it's just a very shortened minutes. He just said, "Thank you for the information we're working on."
All right, we are live though. All right, I now call this committee of the whole in the city, the City Hall Council Chambers at 389 Spruce Street in Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505. On Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, I, Wheezy, you're on speakerphone and on YouTube now. To order, the committee of the whole meeting for the Morgantown City Council is intended to provide an opportunity for the council to receive information, ask questions, as well as identify policy options in an informal setting. No official action will be taken at these meetings. And at this committee of the whole, the first matter that is scheduled in the address will be our sidewalk improvement program update from Kimberly Horn Consultants, as well as our own Damian Davis. Welcome.
Hello. So I wanted to bring some updates to you guys and the whole projects Public Works is working on, that you guys have been interested in for a while. Worked out today was a good time because Kimberly Horn was in town for the MPO's micro simulation study project and then one of the projects we're working on, we had a stakeholder meeting today. So it worked out well that this meeting was today. So we're going to talk about three different projects that we were working on currently. And I'm going to let Colin talk since we're paying him to talk about the projects. So we're going to talk about our pavement assessment that we're doing right now, our pedestrian plan, and then our pedestrian rapid response designs that are about 90%.
Yes.
So I'm going to turn it over to Colin and let him tell you about the good work that we're doing.
Sounds good. Well, thank you all for having me. As Damian mentioned, my name is Colin Froch with Kimberly Horn. We're a planning and design firm currently working on the engineering on-call with the city's engineering public works department. What we're going to talk to you about today are three key projects that we're working on with Damian and Drew. And we're going to go through the first two pretty quickly, the pavement assessment and the pedestrian plan. Those are still ongoing efforts and we're going to highlight most or spend most of our time today talking about our pedestrian rapid response designs. So starting off with the pavement assessment, this effort is aimed at putting together a five to 10-year action plan for the city to understand how they can better pave the roads and maintain the roads within the city of Morgantown. So we've started off by collecting data using LiDAR on a truck-mounted apparatus. To collect that data and it's currently being processed to analyze the existing pavement condition across the entire city. One thing that was different about this project from previous pavement assessments is that we've assessed all of the streets within the city of Morgantown, including the West Virginia Division of Highways Streets as well. So this data and recommendations can be shared with the state. If there's any improvements that the city would like to see on those roads, we can share that data of the conditions of the state-owned maintained roads as well. The next steps would be to put together the plan and addressing the segments of railways that are highest priority so that those can be funded and paved first and help the city lay out that five to 10-year plan so that you can see in your capital budgeting efforts which segments and how much you should spend on an annual basis. For the pedestrian plan, the purpose of this project was to develop a pedestrian improvement action plan so that you can understand how you can address all the pedestrian needs within the city. And most notably, we're trying to meet the FHWA Safe Streets for All Action Plan requirements. That way, if you desire to pursue one of those grants, there's a multitude of federal funds out there as part of that grant program. This plan can be used as the leverage to get those funds instead of having to do a separate plan as part of the SS4A program. We kicked off this project at the beginning of January and we've been working with a number of steering committee members within the city, both representatives from WVIEW, the MPO, different city departments, mountain transit authority, and we've been working through what we're calling the project development phase for starters. This is included in literature and plan review so that we can best incorporate previous studies that the city has undertaken as well as studies by the DOH and the MPO. And then we've been working with the steering committee members to understand better what are their priorities and what are the ways in which they want to assess these facilities, both from an existing and from a planned perspective. So we're looking at how do we prioritize equity versus existing conditions and safety and connectivity. We've had a lot of very positive conversations over the last six months and we actually just had another steering committee meeting today, as Damian mentioned, where we've been showing them the existing conditions results and looking forward to how we're going to analyze that data and come up with a plan for breaking those segments into different projects and different buckets so that you can incorporate that into, again, a five to 10-year plan. As part of the existing conditions assessment, we're wrapping that up right now, actually we're about 90% of the way through. We are analyzing every mile of existing sidewalks, trails, multi-use facilities, as well as every intersection, every missing sidewalk segment, every planned sidewalk segment. So all of these pedestrian facilities in Morgantown, you'll have a very robust and comprehensive data set for and you'll be able to look and see who owns this facility, what is the existing condition, what are the needs, and then we're going to be putting that into a database that'll go through the prioritization process. As part of the prioritization process, we're looking at many of those metrics that I mentioned like equity and connectivity to help prioritize the different segments and intersections for improvements. We want to make sure that we're using the city's money to the best way possible and prioritizing where the needs are most. So if there is a community that has a predominant number of households with no vehicles or vulnerable populations, which would be younger age, school-aged children or senior populations, we want to prioritize those types of projects before perhaps a project that is not accessible to trip generators like shopping centers or places of employment and residential areas. Once we've gone through that prioritization process, we'll develop the plan. Like I mentioned, that's going to be a five to 10-year plan for the city to look at putting these recommendations into action. A key component of this plan is coming up with funding recommendations and different strategies, whether that be looking at bond levies or grants and just showing the city what are the different options. If the entire program is going to cost X millions of dollars and the operating or the CIP budget on an annual basis is this, what do we need to do to fill that gap to make sure that your vision for the future of Morgantown can come to fruition? So looking at a little bit more in depth of how we're going to go through this process, as I mentioned, right now we're finishing up the visual field assessments. And based on the existing conditions of your facilities within Morgantown, we're breaking those down into three buckets that you can see there on the right. We anticipate there will be a number of projects that will be maintenance and replacement. So think of these as low-cost type of improvements that perhaps a in-house concrete crew or maintenance crew could take care of. And if we prioritize that list of projects, they can start knocking them off one at a time. If we move to the right in the green, we then look at spot improvement projects. The next piece of the presentation, we're going to look at some of these rapid response pedestrian plan designs, and those are going to be key examples of what we would consider spot improvement projects. So these include or would require a minimal amount of engineering, they would have a low to mid-range cost and would typically be able to be executed within a short amount of time. And then the final set of projects, we're termed as new construction projects. So these are typically anywhere you have a missing facility or an existing facility that's in such a bad state of repair that the entire thing needs to be rebuilt or reimagined. So these would be your longer scheduled projects, additional funding would potentially be necessary, maybe there's utility relocations or right-of-way. So these are our big-ticket items. Once they're in each of those different project categories, we'll be able to prioritize them and then you can decide as the steering committee, how are we going to prioritize maintenance and replacement projects over spot improvements and new location projects? Just giving you a sneak preview of so far the input that we've gathered from the steering committee, we've developed this prioritization matrix. As you can see, they put a high priority on assessing safety risk, equity and connectivity. We're right now proposing to allot 25% of the overall score for each of these segments to each of those three categories. And the remaining 25% is going to be split between the existing conditions, previous identification and plans or public involvement efforts that are going to be underway later this summer, as well as if that facility could be used for multiple purposes, basically bicyclists as well as pedestrians. And so to give you a better idea of everything we're analyzing, you can see upon the map, this is our mapping database currently of what we're looking at just from a segment perspective. This also includes all of the intersections that are within your roadway network. So the black represents our existing facilities, you can see very much concentrated within downtown Morgantown, and then the missing, planned and missing facilities in that red and orange color. So it's a large number of facilities, both from a segments and intersection perspective. And we're about done with that, we'll be wrapping that up in July and have good results to share at the steering committee meeting. So last but not least, I wanted to walk through our rapid response design. This was a request from the city council as we started the pedestrian plan to put some of these ideas and the impetus for pedestrian improvements into action quick using some of the ARPA funds. So we've worked with Drew and Damian to use that ARPA funding available to plan, design, and hopefully put into construction later this year, these nine locations where there's going to be very positive improvements for pedestrian access and pedestrian safety. If you recall, we approached city council in October of last year, presented these renderings as ideas and we got approval for those. Since then, we've been moving forward with the design and what we're going to show you today are the draft concept designs, which are currently in review by the DOH and the city and other interested parties and agencies within the city. The hope is to get these wrapped up this summer and be under contract with a contractor by the end of the year so that all of the ARPA funds can be used for this effort. So we're going to go one by one through each of these locations, I'll give you a quick this is our mapping database currently of what we're looking at just from a segment perspective. This also includes all of the intersections that are within your roadway network. So the black represents our existing facilities, you can see very much concentrated within downtown Morgantown. And then the missing planned and missing facilities in that red and orange color. So it's a large number of facilities, both from a segments and intersection perspective. And we're about done with that. We'll be wrapping that up in July and have good results to share at the steering committee meeting. So last but not least, I wanted to walk through our rapid response design. This was a request from city council as we started the pedestrian plan to put some of these ideas and the impetus for pedestrian improvements into action quick using some of the ARPA funds. So we've worked with Drew and Damian to use that ARPA funding available to plan, design, and hopefully put into construction later this year, these nine locations where there's going to be very positive improvements for pedestrian access and pedestrian safety. If you recall, we approached city council in October of last year, presented these renderings as ideas and we got approval for those. Since then, we've been moving forward with the design and what we're going to show you today are the draft concept designs, which are currently in review by the DOH and the city and other interested parties and agencies within the city. The hope is to get these wrapped up this summer and be under contract with a contractor by the end of the year so that all of the ARPA funds can be used for this effort. So we're going to go one by one through each of these locations. I'll give you a quick overview of what we're proposing. And if you look up at the top right corner, you'll note just the general location based on board where that project is located within the city. So this is on the far northwest side of the city in the seventh ward where the city boundary meets Star City. There's an existing gravel trail that's connecting the two streets there today. And this is basically formalizing that connection, bringing it up to PROAG, which is the ADA standards within the right of way by paving it to be a five foot asphalt trail and adding some bollards and lighting to help emphasize that connection for bicyclists and pedestrians. We're also including some nice wayfinding signage to encourage people to use that as a connection to go to Star City and welcome them to the city of Morgantown. A little bit further south, at the intersection of University Avenue and then Junior Avenue and Mulberry Street, this is actually a DOH maintained and operated road. So we need to get their approval for this design before it can go to construction. Currently, there is a sidewalk along the bottom part of University Avenue as you look at the screen and a sidewalk along Junior Avenue. So the goal of this project is to connect those two sidewalk facilities and provide the neighbors to the north side of University Avenue a way to reach the businesses to the west and the neighborhood to the south side of University Avenue. We would extend the sidewalk along the corner of Junior Avenue and then to the west to the Colonial Park Business Center. And we're also proposing a new crosswalk with what we call an RRFB or rectangular rapid flashing beacon at that intersection. So that would promote the visibility to pedestrians and encourage safety for those that are crossing. Call attention to the drivers that there could be a pedestrian crossing there. On the right side of your screen, you can also see a little bit of value added proposition there. We've proposed bumping out the curbs there. So we're still maintaining the, what we call the design vehicle or the control vehicle. Trucks that are delivering Amazon packages and school buses can still make the turn. But by decreasing the curb radius, we're greatly decreasing the normal speed that vehicles are going around that curve. So it's a traffic calming measure, hopefully decreasing speeds that are entering the neighborhood, consistent with the speed humps that are there today. Moving on to Oakland Street, this is just east of University Avenue as you're walking towards Pierpont and Oakland Hall. On the north side, you can see there's McDonald's and Hall State. So there's no sidewalk facility on either side of Oakland Street at this location. So we'd be proposing to install sidewalks on both sides. There's also going to be some access management there with the new driveway facilities. On the north side or the right side of your screen, you can see we're proposing a raised crosswalk. Basically, this is a crosswalk facility that's built into a little bit larger speed hump. So it encourages slower speeds and pedestrian safety by increasing the visibility of that crossing facility. Again, to the left, you can see we're also proposing that tighter radius at the intersection of Harding Avenue. This is again a very small addition to the project, but has a great benefit to improve the site distance, to tee in that intersection a little bit better and to decrease the volumes or excuse me, decrease the speeds for vehicles as they're making that right turn off of Oakland onto Harding Avenue. We're still in conversations with the property owners at this location on the north side to make sure we're accommodating those driveways. All right. So moving on to Eureka Drive, this is up in the Wiles Hill neighborhood, right next to the Wiles Hill Playground. So this would be adding a mid-block crosswalk right in front of the community center, again in that raised pedestrian crosswalk configuration. We're also modifying the sidewalk on the south side to connect the mid-block crosswalk with the existing sidewalk on Overhill Street. You can see on the north side of the street, there's an existing sidewalk there today, but it's currently not PROAG approved. The grade of the sidewalk is too high to meet those standards and it ends in a stairs facility. So by moving the sidewalk to the back of curb, we can follow the PROAG guidelines and connect the sidewalk all the way from the parking lot down to Center Street on the west side and extend the sidewalk a little bit further down Center Street to connect to the existing facility that's there today. So this project has the great benefit of providing connectivity and access for pedestrians to the community center, to the Wiles Hill Playground, while still maintaining those parking spaces and the facilities that are out there today. All right. One of the more progressive ones that we're working on is on Prospect Street. This goes all the way from University Avenue to Willy Street. As you know, today Prospect Street is a one-way street going from Willy Street all the way to University Avenue, right by the Mount Larry Clark Hall. There's plenty of space there within this right of way. So what we're doing is reallocating some of the existing pavement and proposing what's called a contraflow bike lane. That means if vehicles are driving in one direction, the bicyclists are driving in the upper, riding rather, in the opposite direction. To improve safety, we're separating the drivers and the bicyclists with a buffer that you can see striped out here in yellow, as well as a parking lane. So this is going to improve bicycle access within the city by providing them an alternate protected route to head from west to east towards the Richwood neighborhood, while also reducing speeds on Prospect Street because of that narrowing of the travel lanes. So in this segment here, not a lot of other improvements are going on. But if we move further to the east, this was an area that has come up quite frequently in conversations about concerns for ADA accessibility. There's a lot of constraints at this intersection with the WVU facilities that are there. The concrete sidewalks are actually an integral part of the steam tunnels within the city of Morgantown. So we're not able to touch those. Basically, what that means is you can't take out that curb and put in a typical ramp. So instead of bringing the curves down to the road, we're bringing the road up to the curb. So this entire intersection is proposed to be a raised intersection. Much of that raised pedestrian crosswalk, the roadway would ramp up to the intersection where the vehicles would then turn or progress through the intersection as they usually do and then continue on and then ramp down through the intersection again. In the middle, what we're proposing to do is reuse some of the bricks that are currently on North High Street as it is being repaved and then recycle them to be placed as an inset within concrete within the middle of this intersection. So again, it'll provide an aesthetic benefit for the intersection and some traffic calming with that textured pavement. The crosswalks though would still be in concrete so that maintains that smooth and PROAG compliant surface. So here you can see the bike lane continues on to the east. And here going along the rest of Prospect Street, we're also making some ADA curb ramp improvements along intersections on Prospect Street where they're currently deficient or need to be improved to meet current design standards. So the second DOH roadway that we're proposing improvements on is Brockway Avenue. This is in the second and sixth ward. Here at the intersection of Kingwood Street and Brockway Avenue, we're proposing a small pedestrian refuge island in the corner that you can see there. This would allow pedestrians to cross the intersection more within their desire lines and also reduces the amount of travel lanes that they are needing to cross in a single stretch. So as you can see, if you're heading from Phoenix Bakery or the towing business that's further to the north, there's now this right turn slip lane that is developed on the other side of the island to allow them to still make that right turn while narrowing the rest of the intersection. Even with this improvement, it's still accessible to passenger vehicles and like a box truck or a moving truck that would go to that business today. A little bit further west on Brockway, so this is at the intersection of Walnut Street and Brockway, right at the edge of the Walnut Street Bridge. This was recently improved by DOH. They upgraded the curb ramps here. We're going to take that a little bit of a step further. So we're not taking away any of the ramp improvements that they've made. But by adding on a larger refuge island here, as you can see on the left, will allow or will permit there to be a pedestrian crosswalk within the intersection so that folks that are walking down Walnut Street and want to continue across the Walnut Street Bridge can cross at a safer location that is additionally has the rectangular rapid flashing beacon to promote the visibility of pedestrians as they're making that crossing. Again, this is another location where we're proposing a contraflow bike lane. So there's a lot of pavement with out here on South Walnut Street going through the neighborhood. So we're proposing to reallocate some of that space as a bike lane, painted buffer, and then the travel lane. This will promote the driver expectancy as you're coming across the Walnut Street Bridge. The pedestrian island will encourage drivers to make that left turn along Brockway instead of heading up Walnut Street in the wrong direction. Going on to Dorsey Avenue and Wagner Street, again, this was a location that we heard a lot of concerns about. This project is improving the pedestrian crossing safety as well as greatly reducing the travel speeds for cars that are turning off of Dorsey Avenue onto Wagner Road. Here you can see we're taking the curb in the left side of the screen and bumping that out drastically to reduce the turning radius for vehicles as they're turning onto Wagner Road. We're also realigning the crosswalks so they're perpendicular to the street to reduce the amount of distance that pedestrians have to cross and also proposing a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at this location. Last but not least, in the South Hills neighborhood, we're proposing some traffic calming as drivers enter the neighborhood. This location is one of our lowest cost improvements and it'll be a good test subject for other neighborhoods within the city. So basically what we're proposing on the left, you can see new speed cushions. There are already some speed cushions within this neighborhood, but these would be added at the very entrance of the neighborhood. And right next to the speed cushions, we'd be proposing the two signs that you see here on the screen. Welcoming drivers to the neighborhood, but also reminding them that given the neighborhood situation, the neighborhood context, that these streets are shared. So bicyclists, pedestrians, transit users, they're all sharing that roadway with the drivers. Further on down the hill, we're also proposing to install a pole mounted speed display sign. So as drivers go over the speed cushions, ideally their speed is reduced, but then traveling down the hill, their speed might increase again. So this pole mounted speed display sign would encourage them to be cognizant of their speed as they're entering the rest of the neighborhood. So I mentioned the schedule already. We kicked this off in the fall of last year. We've been working hard on the design and we feel like we're very close to getting the approvals we need and the coordination with all the other agencies. So we're on track to get this out to bid for construction in the fall of this year. So construction could commence later this year or sometime in 2025. I think the most appealing part of this project is you're getting eight locations that are being greatly improved, I think, in the eyes of the public. And the total cost for planning, engineering and construction, we estimate right now to be only about $1.5 million. So that ARPA money is being put to really good use with these projects. And it shows how $1.5 million can really go a long way when it comes to these pedestrian improvements and making improvements, not only to access and safety, but also to traffic calming. Any questions?
I don't have a question. Do you have a quick comment? Really excited about the Dorsey Avenue one, seeing all the students there. Yes, because a lot of the students use that access to either go to South Middle School or they use it to go to Morgantown High School. And in the winter time, before sun rises and until after seven and we're supposed to be in school by 7:10, I can't see them. I go extra slow because I know, but some people may not. So I'm excited about that.
Yeah, a couple, the, sorry, I'm trying to find the Brockway. There it is. That would not be the rapid fire blinking crosswalk, right? That's just a straight up crosswalk?
Which one? So there's two crosswalks proposed on Brockway. The first one would have the rectangular rapid flashing beacon at Walnut Street. We anticipate this being a higher volume location in a curved intersection. We want to call attention to those pedestrians. But at the other location, we're considering an RFB here as well as just not show on the screen. And that would just be for the crosswalk on the left side.
And have you had any response from the DOH in terms of these requests?
We had a preliminary meeting with Donna Hardy about a couple of weeks ago. I think it was well received as far as I could tell. Unfortunately, Donna Hardy is no longer with the Division of Highways. So we, she was coordinated on at the last time we spoke to, I think her colleagues or her supervisors. So we have yet to see how that transpires.
I mean, to put in what you're proposing on Brockway would be fabulous. I think we might hit some obstacles, but I really hope we can do it.
Since some of those improvements are in gateway right of way, any chance we can get them to participate in those?
In the funding?
Uh, yes. Has that been asked them? I mean, we've done the studies and we're making the recommendations, but that, those kinds of, I'm just wondering if there's.
Say, we haven't, we haven't made the ask and I will say, because we're trying to push these up, one of the ways in which we've been trying to convince them to approve these is by saying, we have the money. We're ready to go to construction. Put it in today.
Can one slow it down?
Yeah.
I'm curious, along Brockway, since Brockway is under consideration for renovation this construction season, how is that affecting your schedule?
So we're hoping to coordinate this with DOH. Even if they do come and reconstruct this, the pavement surface that you're talking about in the meantime, we still would be able to go back. Since we're just working with the curbs and the pedestrian refuge islands, this could be done retroactively as well. Not ideal. We'd like it to be done at the same time. So we're going to try to coordinate that. But in the worst case scenario, we could do it retroactively as well.
While you're in conversation, let me reiterate, it would be nice to see if they would be willing to participate in accomplishing this.
Who knows? They may have some extra money later.
If we don't make the ask, we don't get it. So please do make the ask.
In Evansdale, the Oakland's location, people have been asking for those sidewalks and we're hoping for both sides for so many years. They will be, so that neighborhood association will be so excited that, you know, if this could happen, that it's like, kind of like, kind of like a dream or a surgery or something. So anyway, good choice. And then, you're explaining the bike facilities and you have a couple of places where you have this contraflow bike lane. What happens to the bicycles going the other direction? Are they just going with traffic or?
Yes. So as you can see here, if the bicyclist is coming down Prospect Street and turning right onto North High Street where it's one way, we, the bicyclists that are heading down North High Street with traffic, we would just designate that with a share of to alert drivers that this is again a shared street.
And I like the reuse of the brick school. The University Avenue in the fourth ward at Junior. Yeah, so there used to be a crosswalk there. I believe there used to be a crosswalk also at Rotary up a bit. And then when it was paved, it was taken away, which was unfortunate. This would be so much better and that roadway separates a neighborhood from an ice cream store. So that's dangerous. So this, this would be, this would be wonderful. So it just is, it would just be amazing if we could work with the Division of Highways and get some of these completed projects.
I will say when we spoke with Donna, this was an easy yes in her book. She said this was a, it's on their list of VRU, which is Vulnerable Road User Corridors.
Yes.
And so this was, she thought, an easy sell.
Kids cross there.
Brockway a little bit more difficult, but this one being within two neighborhoods and adjacent to a lot of community facilities, schools, ice cream shops, like you mentioned. There's definitely an understood need for it at this location.
There used to be a crosswalk, I mean a crossing guard there, pardon. And I still have their stop sign with the wooden handle that they gave me when they left, as if somehow I was going to be able left, as if somehow I was going to be able to continue to go back and forth and back and forth with a little stop sign. So anyway, this would be way better.
ViCA has flags here, correct?
Yes. Yes, which is another cool project that helps emphasize that this is where people cross.
I appreciate that we tried to make an impact across the city in each ward. I will again say, as I said the first time this was presented to us, I think saying any of this is in Fifth Ward is a bit of a stretch. Fifth Ward is, orienting myself on maps is not my strong suit, but I don't think Fifth Ward is actually pictured in any of these maps, even though we have it listed. I think the only piece of any of these projects that is in Fifth Ward is Prospect Street right in front of Arnold. And based on the maps that I have seen early on in the warden boundaries process, that will not even be Fifth Ward by the time this is done, likely. We do have major pedestrian concerns in different areas of Fifth Ward. As long as we're trying to work with DOH, I think trying to get people from the Woodburn Neighborhood over to the middle school across Willy Street should be more of a priority. I think that trying to get people from the Drone Park Neighborhood across Route 7 down to the rail trail should be more of a priority. I'm not sure anyone in Fifth Ward, I'm not sure very many, if anyone, in Fifth Ward would say this is a big priority for us. So I just don't want us to lose sight of the fact that there's a lot of other major concerns that, that we need to look at. None of this is Fifth Ward.
I would emphasize the Mount near Middle crossing to get to the school bike.
And some of those projects are being looked at as part of the larger project. This is just a, try to get a few things done with the ARPA funds that we have on hand.
I know. It was just presented to us originally as we're doing something in every ward and I was like, no, you're not.
There are things coming for Fifth Ward.
Okay. I'll take your word for it. I trust you.
I also like the repurposing of the bricks. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Good?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here today. We really appreciate it. All right.
We've been waiting. Here it comes.
And next in our presentations, we have a MUB ordinance authorizing the price increase from the Cheat Lake area. General Manager Mike McMillty.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. I've got Dr. Tom Witt with us this evening. He's our Vice Chair of the MUB Board of Directors and he's also a Cheat Lake resident, which is the project we're discussing this evening. Rich Rogers, the Chief Engineer Assistant GM is here. Chip Royce, our Comptroller, and Ken Hacker, our Senior Engineer. Ken's got a brief PowerPoint he's going to put up in just a moment. This is a very important project, as you know, where Cheat Lake is a growing area. We've reached the point where we have to expand. We're exceeding permit limits now and we have been awarded $6.75 million in ARPA funds from what are development authority. And so as you know, these funds are on timelines. We have to bid out, they're wanting us to bid by mid-August, late August at the latest so we can get these under contract in December because the funds have to be spent by December of 2026. These are going to be first-dollar-in funds, which is a rarity to ever have grants that way. We are in the process of working with the West Virginia DEP, the State Revolving Fund Loan Program. That will be most likely the bulk of our funding here. I think that's probably the only other funding we will pursue. We're currently in the process of finalizing the numbers for the cost of the projects. We haven't nailed that down completely. We're still working with the Army Corps of Engineers. There are some wetland mitigation issues that we're going to have to deal with and there will be costs associated. And so those costs are still being determined. It's the same way with West Virginia DEP. We're going to have to purchase credits for mitigation of wetlands, which are outside of the core jurisdiction. There's also a few project costs that we're working with DEP now to see how that will fit into the loan. So they have to make a determination on that for us. We are working with Tom Amon. He will be our Bond Counsel, obviously. He will be working and preparing the project ordinance, the bond ordinance, and the rate ordinance that we will be bringing to City Council. So I anticipate we would see those either late August or early September. We will be, or maybe later September, I'm sorry, because we will have, look at where the bids will come in. You know, there will be a multitude of projects bidding in August across the state. So it's going to be a bonanza, I think, to say the least. So that's kind of the short version of what is happening at this point, but we appreciate being able to come in and talk about this and get it on your radar that these things will be coming in front of City Council. We will be holding our next board meeting out at Cheat Lake and we will be talking more with the residents there about the project at our July 9th meeting. So I will turn this over to Ken and let him walk you through the technical aspects of the project.
Spike? Good evening. Ken Hacker, Morgantown Utility Board. Just going to give you a brief overview of the Cheat Lake wastewater treatment plant, a little bit of history, where we're at now with the project and moving forward. So if you're familiar with where this plant is, a lot of people don't even know it exists there. It's off Sunset Beach Boulevard in Cheat Lake. Was originally built in 1984. It had the capacity of 250,000 gallons per day at that time. MUB assumed responsibility for the plant in 1998, took ownership of it and operation of it and designed and underwent or implemented a, an expansion in 2000, 2001 to the plant that would triple its capacity up to 750,000 gallons per day, along with the construction of a white-run pump station that sits just off of Tyler Road. So doing so, it, like I said, tripled the capacity of the plant and expanded the service area of the plant by putting in the pump station and extending that force main to the plant. Just a side note or a keynote, that the Cheat Lake wastewater treatment plant is completely independent of the other MUB-operated wastewater treatment plant, Star City. So some current challenges that we're seeing today with the growth that's going on in the area, you know, we're fortunate enough to be experiencing growth steadily in that area. Along with the last major upgrade occurring over 20 years ago, the equipment is becoming antiquated and in need of replacement just from age and use. Along with the growth, we're seeing the flows or the capacity of the plant exceeded certain times under certain events. And it's predicted that if growth continues as it is, we'll likely see the plant exceed current flows a third of the time if no changes are made. So what that means is without an upgrade, either growth in the area will likely have to be restricted or the plant's going to fail and we're going to get into some hot water with some regulatory agencies. So as I was explaining, Sunset Beach Boulevard borders the existing plant, which is in the dashed yellow area. In 2018, MUB purchased the shaded blue parcel with the intent of a future expansion for the plant. And the red force main is what connects the white-run pump station to the existing plant. So we're looking at 12 and a half acres on that parcel 58 that we will have available for this expansion. We are working with Strands and Associates to, they are coming up with a design. The right now current proposed design will take the capacity up to 1.75 NGDs or just over two times what the current capacity is of the plant. At that capacity is expected to serve the area for greater than 20 years with the current growth. So with expanding the capacity, there'll be new equipment, electrical systems, state-of-the-art odor control that will be going in place that will be used to meet the current and future state federal regulations as far as F1 requirements. In speaking with the residents in the area, you know, aesthetics are obviously a big concern. So we're taking that into account and working with a, our ancient design firm, Strand, is working with a landscape architect to come up with a nice landscaping plan that will hopefully addressing concerns with how it's going to look in the end. This is kind of hard to see, but you can see where the existing plant or plant is on the left side of the screen, sort of the proposed landscaping that is going to run alongside of Sunset Beach Boulevard, various plants, trees, shrubs. And then you can see faintly the design or the proposed plant expansion that encompasses a lot of that proposed lot. And at the very top of the page is actually Kelly Run Stream that Mike briefly mentioned. We will be relocating and daylighting and putting back into a restored stream where it now currently is within the culvert, bisects the parcel completely. So a little bit of stream restoration, natural habitat's going back as well as part of this project. So currently we are about where the blue arrow is in the timeline, quickly approaching the bidding phase of the project. We're having calls almost daily with either the Army Corps of Engineers or West Virginia DEP, talking about the stream restoration, wetland mitigation. And we know that's, that's sort of the last piece of the puzzle to get put into place before we could go to bid. Once we get their blessing with the funding agency that we are meeting all the requirements for mitigation, then we'll be allowed to advertise for bidding. And then finally into construction and we are estimating it to be a 24 to 30-month construction phase. So all goes well, 2026 we should have expanded new plant and upgraded pump stations. That's a very quick overview. Any questions? I think we made 10 minutes.
Just out of curiosity, and I'm assuming that's a rather silly question, this will meet future needs in terms of...
To an extent, if, yeah, meets what's required currently. You know, if some crazy numbers are introduced at a future date, you know, it will have to be, as will everybody, reconfigured to meet those limits.
In terms of the information you have, it's the expectation this will meet whatever has been presented to you so far?
Yes. Yeah, we're looking at, you know, using blue steel ultraviolet UV light for disinfection. That will be able to be changed in the future as well, looking at sort of the front edge of everything.
Thank you.
Yeah, you had mentioned that the projections of failure on the current system without the upgrade. Could you just hit that again in terms of how frequently that might occur?
Yeah. So we're seeing it, I don't know currently how often we are seeing the monthly flows exceeded, but at the projected, I think, growth of 3%, they were looking at within six years, which is now less than six years. These numbers were given to us probably close to a year ago. So, you know, within that timeframe, you know, possibly a third of the time will be exceeding the limits with the capabilities of the plant is the belief.
What's the sort of customer base or the number of, maybe not the number of people, but what, what sort of percent, like when you come and you see Cheat Lake itself and then you know that there's customers that are, you know, probably up and over the hills, different places, but you look around the lake and you'd like to see that water body kind of protected. What percentage of people are hooked to this and then what percentage are like, you know, hooked to septic system or not too hooked up at all or?
Don't move that, you know that.
At the point, there's about 4,300 customers, if you notice this way.
You'll need to repeat that so that it could be broadcast.
Approximately 4,300 customers are served by this plant in Cheat Lake area.
Are there, are there areas, like are there kind of obvious areas that could be, could be possibly brought in once this is expanded so that more customers are on this type of service and fewer are on septic or other kinds of services? I mean, it's hard around the lake, I know, to connect everybody up to something like this.
There would be that capability. And I know there's been talk of developments out there and certainly that would be possible when this, when this project happens. I don't really know the answer to how many are on septic as opposed to not, but certainly there would be a potential for...
You do not have to have that answer right now. I just, I just was thinking about this because when you see a beautiful body of water like that, the more customers you have hooked up to this kind of system, the better.
Yeah, right.
For everyone's benefit.
We talked, you talked a little bit about population growth or maybe in this bill. They're estimating an average of about 3% to 4% growth over the last 10 years. And so they've projected that and added a little bit and made sure that they designed for the next 20 years to be able to handle that continued growth out there.
And when we're talking about it's expected to exceed the limits, when it exceeds limits, what does that look like? Where does it go? Does it go into the lake? Like, I mean, we have Deckers Creek overflow, right? Is there, does that go into Cheat Lake?
Sometimes. The plant can run a higher peak flow than its average daily flow. It's not ideal, but it can run through and do a treatment on that. And that's what you're seeing is this plant is forced to run wide open essentially more often than it should.
So it's a design capacity that our permit's based on?
Yeah.
So we can, we can handle a higher, you know, flow, however, it's not, it wasn't designed to do that for extended periods.
Okay.
Good? All right. Thank you all for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Bill, did you have something?
I just quickly, I wanted to reassure the city that funding for that is not coming necessarily out of any, any of their billing. This is being carried by the people who are going to use it.
That's correct.
I just wanted to reaffirm that. That's all.
Yeah, specifically the Cheat Lake area.
Yeah. Thank you.
About 4,300 customers.
Thank you for your good work.
Well, just let's hear.
Yes, please. I think we're about to, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. And the last of our presentations, the Mountain Line Transit Access Pass Program with the General Manager, Ms. Maria Smith. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I'm just going to take one minute and get started.
Absolutely.
Damien Left, who is our tech support.
You helped me out the other night.
Okay.
You didn't let me hang. All right. Well, so first I want to thank you all for having me and the opportunity to come in and to work with you all. I greatly appreciate your time. I'm going to go through kind of where we are, some ideas, and maybe step forward. So... So, so a bit of the timeline, so just this program was, so Route fifty down knots, it used to travel, it was Monday through Friday from eight to five thirty-four, that's Monday through Saturday. And so we added the number of hours in twenty twenty-one, went from two thousand nine hundred sixty-four to five thousand nine hundred, five thousand nine six. And at the same time, we added with the expectation of Jesus House of Hope moving into Scott Avenue, we added on time to go into Scott Avenue on the outbound trip and on the inbound trip. And then the added hours of service continued at Monday through Sunday, so seven days until about eight forty-five at night. So the hours of service that's there, that was there previously, that is not included at all with the MCR agreement. So September twenty twenty-two, we had, we had an issue with trying to get people from downtown to the services. And the main problem there was that we couldn't get these people to come in, we couldn't make contact with them. So at the time, we had funding, the best answer to it was just to make the whole route free so people could freely come and go. And so that part of it worked, but of course, when you have free ridership, it's gonna expand and get more expensive. So that's where we are now, looking for a more sustainable solution. And so this got us into the ridership a little bit more. The bottom blue line is your twenty twenty-one ridership, the red line is your twenty twenty-two ridership, and the green line is your twenty twenty-three ridership. Top right box, September twenty twenty-one is is when we started. So just a overview of ridership. So looking at it geographically, of course, the goal of the plan was to get people from downtown out to Jesus House of Hope. And when we blanketed this, these are all of the trips that we were providing for free because we covered the whole route. So we're looking on the left, that's a little bit closer view of what our actual target was. So it was kind of a scattered results there, but we can see that the number, the percentage of people who were our target, who either boarded or departed our bus at Jesus House of Hope is minimal compared to the total ridership. Okay, so some of the issues that we're facing right now, so we have a lack of sustainable funding for the program in the way that it is right now. There's a question, are we reaching the intended audience that we meant to reach and wanted to reach? Are we providing unnecessary trips? So seeing the ridership go as high as it did, there's trips on there that, we call them no destination trips. So they're just riding to have something to do, to seek shelter, to, I don't know. And then there are trips covered by other programs. So I'll dive into this with the demographics, but we don't know these people. We haven't brought them in. We don't know if they qualify for any of our other programs, if they're Medicaid, if they're Medicare, if they're reaching out for treatment or recovery from an opioid addiction, there's a program for that. So bringing these people in and getting to figure out who they are is helpful in finding other solutions for them. And one of the things that we've been trying to do is to make sure that if somebody does have a pass, but they're swiping it onboard, because those rides get deducted from this program. So if somebody is WVU, they get deducted. If somebody is veteran on that program, they get deducted. And if anyone has a property tax pass, that gets deducted. So one of the riders that I talked to, and he was coming off down knots, and said, you did swipe your pass on that route, right? He said, no. I said, I'm not gonna swipe my pass on that route. I said, I need to go. He said, it's free. I'm not gonna use my pass for it. So there's a little bit of a battle there. But I think with the way the program's set up, it's a little difficult to get people to to swipe their card when they don't have to. So the way I see this is two phases. Right now, what we need to do is connect people to social services that are available in the area. A second part of this would be to maintain a level of transportation for those who are attending social service agencies. Right now, my focus is on number one. So with that, I will introduce the Access Pass. The Access Pass program is to provide transportation to those most in need in our community, including the shelter population, those needing food, help with addiction, family services, healthcare, employment opportunity, opportunities, et cetera. The goal with this program is to have a more targeted distribution level to provide access to the entire transit system for them and not just one route, provide information about all of the services that are available to them and to provide them with the route information to get there. So I specifically branded this as the City of Morgantown Access Pass. It is good for a single ride. This is part of just the draft idea. It doesn't need to be a City of Morgantown Access Pass, it can be a community access pass. It can be a single ride or it can be a two ride. There's a lot of flexibility here. So the thought here, I had passed one along, but so the Access Pass would be provided kind of booklet style, small, discreet, so that we can easily hand it out and distribute it. The Access Pass program, this this particular booklet would provide them with the information on what routes have what services and how to get there and give them the pass to get there. So in these boxes, which are likely not legible on anyone's version, but it lists the services available by what they are, not who they are. So it's been my experience that no one's gonna come and say, hey, I need to go to Aspire. They're gonna say, hey, I need shelter, I need food, I need whatever. So that's what's listed in these boxes. And so it directs them, lets them know specifically where they can go. On the backside, we can do a, this is a partial system map, so these routes are just the ones that would have social service agencies along them. This is gonna need to be dove into a little more deeply. I didn't pull all the social services that are available. So it still needs a bit more work, but the idea is that we would have a route map that would show them, we can do, number each of the different agencies and then put the numbers on the map so they can see how it corresponds. Okay, so here's a closer outlook of Route fifty down knots, the services that are available. On the backside, we can call them Christian Help or Hazel's House of Hope, you know, so they know by name. But we can also include here that there's food here, that there's shelter there, that there's addiction recovery help here, so we can determine how specific that is. Again, so this would be the red line and the gold line. This pass is not specific to any particular route, so they can ride anywhere on the system, which opens it up a little bit. And I included Route fifty-one mile in to get them out to Mile and Park. There's quite a few resources out there as well. So I ran out of time, but another idea would be like a fellowship map that would outline some of the churches in the area. So if someone's looking for fellowship, we can also outline that and get them there. Okay, so the distribution, and this is where I think we have some good starter ideas, and I think this is gonna be an ongoing brainstorm of how we do this. And so you guys or whoever, this is like a joint effort on how we determine how we're gonna distribute them. And this is the key to what is gonna make this work. So some of the ideas that I had to have them at the Public Safety Building, the City Library, some of the nonprofits, and I will, I think later I'll point out, but our social service agencies are buying a lot of passes from us, even through this program, so I think that they can help out too. The Morgantown City Ambassadors, the idea there is the city ambassadors are downtown, so it might be a simple card that says, hey, it looks like you might need some help, and we give them information on what's available and a bus pass to get there. So I just think that's a really good point of contact. Retail outlets, the police department, city, I have city and that's some of the twists. The blessing boxes, so we could do like a kind of like a promotional item, I don't know if you guys have seen like the tubes that have toothpaste and toothbrushes, just some like basic essentials, and we can use that to put a map of the social service agencies with a bus pass in there as well and put those in the blessing boxes. We'll have to gauge and see how long they last in there, find out if the bus pass is left on the ground or if the toiletries are left on the ground and what people think is more important. And then the downtown businesses, that was another idea, that any downtown businesses could have access to passes and hand them out as needed. So, yeah, so this is just another method of distribution. This is a City of Morgantown's City Ambassador Courtesy Pass. Could say just, looks like you need some help, this pass is being provided to you to introduce you to some of the services that we offer. The time to implement this program, I think we would all probably be on board with this as soon as possible, but obviously we want to get together and we want to iron out the Some of the things, obviously the name, whether it's gonna be single ride, double ride, full list of social service agencies and their locations in the area, the printing of the fare box cards, I'm waiting for an estimate to come back, they can be four to six weeks, and that's one of my concerns with the program. And then the dot design and the print of the bus, so that's that. I kind of quickly went through, again, it's just an idea. Happy to entertain questions or-
Can I start? Should I start? Okay. Some questions, these are a single use pass?
In this particular example, yes. Does it need to be? No. So we could do a two-ride pass, there's other pass options too.
How does this alleviate the difficulty that you're experiencing now in terms of funding?
So these passes would be able to be purchased upfront in bulk, so the city could purchase these and then distribute them through these avenues. And then that would be open to the county or any other administration.
You determined, I don't mean to be the inquisitor here, but have you determined a price for these? Is appropriate?
The same as our regular fare.
So they're seventy-five cents apiece?
Yeah. Now, for this particular program, when you're buying them in a bulk amount, then there's a discounted rate, so that would be point six six seven cents per card.
And how does this tap into any of the social services that may have other sources of funding for these particular endeavors?
So the social, so here's, we would have these cards, we would print them, we would have the material with the social service agencies. Anyone who wanted to purchase those, just like buying a pass in any way, could purchase those from us and distribute them however.
This is like a starter.
Now, do social service, social service agencies, in terms of being able to provide services, transportation being one of them, could they be able to qualify for grant state or any sort of funding to possibly help purchase said passes to offset costs?
Yeah, so our our social service agencies currently do buy a lot of passes even through this program. In twenty-two and twenty-three together, there were about twelve thousand passes purchased from our community partners. So I think they have some funding for it. I think that this initial step is just to get them access to the social services. And then the idea would be that the social services would have passes or something to keep that number going, which is partly why I'm suggesting maybe a two-ride pass to make them out there, and you know, it's not just a one-way, you're okay.
Get them out and back?
Yeah.
And, yeah, I'm sorry, and your driver will be collecting the passes, is that correct?
They would scan through the fare box, just like all of our other fares.
And if they scanned once or twice, then they would be useless?
So after, after the number of passes that it's set to have, so after one swipe, if it's a one-ride pass, it would be no longer useful, useful. So it would error the next time it went through.
I can see where that might be difficult, I mean, not only in litter, but people trying to use passes that they have no indication of them being already exhausted.
So we usually end up with a whole bunch of these passes in a trash can, which is on the bus, that happens.
So the driver would say, I'm sorry, it doesn't work, and they would take it from them and put it in-
Yeah, the driver, once they see it errors, gonna say, it's no good.
I'm sorry, it seems so rudimentary, and I don't mean to be, but I'm confused by it and just needed to have it in luck. Explain to me an amount of it I understood.
Yeah. We do a cleanup, so if there's passes that are left on the bus at the end of the month, we collect them and we put them through to see the value so that for accountability. It's not usually any more than like maybe six or seven dollars. So mostly people are gonna pick those passes up, try and use them, if they don't work, they'll throw them away.
This is something you already have in place or you have a similar thing?
Yeah, we have been using single ride passes. The uniqueness to this is that we are disseminating it in different ways and providing the social service agency information.
And you haven't experienced any problems that you're, complaints or problems that internally administering it or complaints from outside sources using it? I mean, you're not hearing any kind of feedback that's negative?
No. So we have had single ride, fifteen ride, and thirty day passes for as long as I can remember. Fare boxes came in and were installed shortly, two thousand, early two thousands probably. So we've been using those passes since then.
Good, thank you.
A couple of things. Bill, to your point, I've seen on other bus systems where they'll have a, it's a sort of box where you put the, you put the pass inside, it takes the ticket down, and if it's say multi-use, it will stamp it and then give it back. If it is one-use, it just takes it. There's your bus passes. But so I, I'm sure that's a much larger-
Our fifteen ride does that, so it would take it in, stamp it, spin it back out, and give them the update on how many are left.
Okay. But I've just seen that as a way to avoid waste in other places, but you know, I'm sure that's a wider implementation than something like this. And like, there was also like, you could put like a plastic card, if you had a permanent pass in it, would take it down. I think it was like DC whereas-
Yeah, I've been in big cities where we have multiple, you know, I think Washington is a good example, you feed it in and it comes back out or it doesn't, you know. I just didn't know that we were at this point in time considering that kind of technology integrated into what we have.
Yeah, in terms of technology, you all even have digital one-use passes, right?
Yeah, so we do have mobile passes, they're three-token transit, so it's, right now it's just a visual for the driver, we don't have readers on the buses yet. This is kind of one of our up and coming projects. Our fare boxes have been discontinued, so we are looking for either a replacement or a new way forward with those. So I think similar to what you were talking about, there's open and closed accounts, so you can have a card that's rechargeable, either you can do yourself or you can do it on a machine, but it puts like a dollar value on that and then you have that- but it puts like a dollar value on that, and then you have that anymore.
Yeah, that's what, in, in Atlanta, it's like the whole public transportation, so like you can get on a bus with the same card as you can, like the trains and everything else, there's like little pay stations, and you get like a permanent card.
I heard something you're concerned about, you say fare boxes are no longer available?
They're never, well, they're not supported anymore, so we're keeping them going and keeping them up and running.
So someone could get on the bus and?
No, they're, they're working. The manufacturer upgraded their.
No, no, but I mean, so there's no way of, just my saying not having anything except seventy-five cents in my pocket, getting aboard the bus, giving seventy-five cents to the driver?
So you can still put seventy-five cents in the fare box, you can still swipe your pass in the fare box, and you can still get the fifteen-ride processed. There's nothing wrong with the fare boxes at this point.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
I didn't mean to make you panic.
Hmm?
We didn't mean to make you panic.
So, um, what I'll say is, uh, given, uh, engaging with people who are using these kind of services before we had a free bus route and afterwards, um, a pain point and major point of frustration was figuring out what places had passes. This seems to replicate that issue. Um, so I have a lot of concern with that. Um, you know, if, if it was, if they were plentiful enough that that was like, they were like kind of always available, that would probably be highly mitigated. But, um, it was, there was a lot of, um, and I'm sure probably Jenny and Danielle might remember that we'd have the, um, homeless committee meetings, and there would be like fifteen, twenty minutes spent. Who has passes right now, and who do we need to get them to, and can we get some passes to?
Do you have money to buy passes?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you share your passes?
Can we share some passes across, um, and there was also like considerable time then also spent on like, what are we going to do about transportation updates? Um, so I worry about single-use passes. Um, again, unless they are like to the point where, um, nobody's ever going to run out. And I don't think our social services necessarily have the funding to guarantee that, right? Um, I appreciate, uh, the idea that these can be used wide, in, in wider areas. That is a specific need that I've run up against quite a bit. Um, and I see where your pain points are in terms of your riderships appears to not just be, well, it's a lower percentage from what you said, right, of actual people going to Hazel Pass, right? So I appreciate all that. Um, I just wonder if more elegant solutions might be found in, in say, um, pulling pulling data from certain engaged individuals within a certain period of time. And then saying these amount of individuals need a bus pass for this amount of time, coordinating with a specific agency to do so. I think, say if we did a fifteen or thirty-day pass, uh, for individuals, uh, it, it would do two things, right, which is, one, we're not running all over the place to try to find bus passes all the time. And two, creates an incentive for a touchpoint with outreach workers. Um, say for a fifteen to thirty-day pass. Um, once we have the thirty-day pass, it's like, I need to go back up to Aspire, Salvation Army, or Health Right, and, um, try to get a bus pass again, and that can create, uh, again, a touchpoint for another set of services. But I do, uh, worry, I just, I just worry about single-use passes, um, because I've had experience with them, and like the kind of frustrations those can bring.
So these are some of the things that we can still brainstorm. Um, you know, maybe there's like a certain emblem that we can put that says the passes are over here. Um, there is a communication box that's down by the amphitheater that I think is both parks, um, but they've given us, is it not the park anymore?
Both parks doesn't run the, the amphitheater anymore, so I don't know what box it is, but.
It's a communication box along the rail trail that goes through there. Anyway, so.
Well, figure out, is that like a WVU one near the aquarium or something?
The one that's down by the wall there.
Yeah.
But these may be a point where we can put passes and have them available, and you know, maybe we branded our logo it, so they see that symbol and they know there's passes there. How they're replenished, maybe it's five a day, let's see how that goes, ten a day, see how that goes. I don't know what the threshold is where the necessary trips are met versus the not necessary trips, and so where we make that determination. So that's, it's a more open distribution method, um, rather than having them maybe at the library or public safety or something like that. On your note with the, um, the social service agencies running out, one of the other cities had, um, you know, one day in the month where everyone can come and pick up passes if they needed them. Um, so we could kind of channel that for the social services agencies a little bit more. Um, Hazel Pass and Hope Blanket's a whole bunch of them, so maybe that's just one set there, but. Um, and then the, I don't disagree with the thirty-day pass, but I think that's phase two that I was talking about. So right now, I think the urgency is to get them to the social service agencies. They'll be able to be taken care of, or at least have that information there. Most of the social service agencies that are out there have been buying passes from us, so I think there's some floating around there to help us with this gap. Um, but then I think phase two is kind of more of a how often do we want them to check in and pick up a bus pass first? So do we want them coming back to visit us weekly, do we do a fifteen-ride? Um, most of the passes that the social service agencies are buying from us are either single-ride or fifteen-ride. So I think having a conversation with them might be helpful to see how that's been working for them. Um, but yeah, so we have the thirty-day passes too. I wouldn't suggest the thirty-day passes at this level, just because the expense of it, it's getting more trips.
Hmm. You, you seem to point to your, your difficulty with this is the idea of distribution and availability. Um, also, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of you've done a good job of identifying and probably have the, the data to support it, uh, the, the rider usage to these various locations that provide these services. I'm suspecting that the services may be also approachable in terms of being, you know, not only contributing to them, but also, and also distributing.
Oh, for sure, I think, yeah.
So it's a matter of, you know, administering a program that seems to be appropriate to the needs, in other words, satisfying the needs. But yeah, obviously, you know, the, the better solution would be free across the board, but, uh, you know, it's always a matter of how to fund these things. Um, it seems like it's moving in the right direction, what do we do to move it forward?
Um, I think probably the next step would be to get together and figure out the details of it. Um, whether we want this to be, what does the future of this look like, right? Do we want this just to be a city access pass, or do we want a community access pass? Um, do we want it to be a single-ride, do we want it to be a two-ride pass? Um, somehow gather all the information about the social service agencies in their area and where they belong, where they, their addresses, right, so we can get them all mapped out. Um, but it's not a difficult thing to put in place. Um, my longest thing that I'm concerned about is getting the actual printing of the cars done. Um, but there might be an alternative for that.
So, we're, um, we're right now kind of poised that we can work through this. Um, the county is aware that we're, um, interested in this, interested in partnering with the county. Um, I think the two-ride pass was something that just makes sense, if you give someone a pass to get somewhere, that they have the ability to pick where they started. Um, and working with the agencies to look at longer-term passes, once we have a way for people to get there. Um, we just are to the point where we don't have partners that are willing to pay the increasing costs of the entire route, so targeting the people that need them to get to where they need to go and to make use of the whole system seems like a big winner. But we would need to work out the bugs, I think you have scheduled appointment with our, our, our administration scheduled appointment with you to talk about these things at the beginning of.
I believe so, Angela.
Um, oh, sorry, did you, okay, well, just, um, I, so I would, I would really like to see something like this in conjunction with, with like a, a, a longer-term uh, pass that, um, uh, would be managed, but, you know, however, whatever qualifications we might, uh, come up with. Um, my, my other concern, I guess, is, um, is, uh, just trying to understand where we're coming from in terms of pricing because of the individuals riding, I, I would suspect, at least the target population, um, and in, and in my experience, um, that, that we're discussing today would, would be Medicaid recipients, I mean, or Medicare recipients, um, pretty much across the board. Um, and so, uh, I wonder what that, what, you, like, how that's taken into consideration, I guess.
So we get them this pass, we get them to the social service agencies, they figure out that they're Medicaid or Medicare, and then we work on that, and get them signed up with whatever program. Same thing with like a veteran, right? So as soon as we get these people to a social service agency or someplace that we can get some information from them, then we can channel them into a program, there's a program for them.
So, so I guess that's, that's like, that's part of, um, I guess, like, maybe the, the slight disconnect, I guess I'm feeling a little bit, is that, um, I, like, we could, right now, take data from the coalition, from, um, West Virginia coalition, yeah, and take HMIS data, and it has that. It'll tell you right now, um, individuals that have been contacted within the past couple weeks, part of HUD requirements for reporting is what their insurance carrier is, and any other, you know, income and benefits, uh, things of those na, of that nature. Um, I think like that kind of database sharing, um, uh, is something they'd be willing to do, but it's also like, I think probably important to, to what we're talking about today.
Which, which agencies, um, have access to that, so that then they could work with bus system to develop a pass for an individual?
So in terms of like exporting data reporting, um, the coalition.
Well, so what?
In terms of exporting data reporting, the coalition, um, you know.
But I mean, no, no other agencies have access to the data?
Well,
Or can import?
Any, any agency that has access to HMIS can request any data set in which, that you wish, so.
Which, which type of agencies work with that system?
I could do that, um, like myself, um, but, um.
We're not having.
Right, but, but.
Put everyone on there, you can put your share on it, right?
Yeah, Bartlett House, uh, obviously, um, would be able to get that kind of data, Catholic charities, um, uh, Health Right, it, it, some individuals at Health Right. Um, I believe that's, that's all I can think of, right now. Right?
I'm just confused, I guess my, we can already buy seventy-five cent one-time passes, can you buy a two-ride pass right now? No, so we're talking about the possibility of a two-ride pass as opposed to giving someone two passes, but they're at full price, seventy-five cents. So the program that we're talking about is really new packaging. Um, putting a, a map and a list of services on the back. That's not what I was hoping for when last week they told me, just wait, just wait, we're going to hear from them next week. I was really, much like Counselor Butcher was saying, in my head, I was like, oh, this is going to be great. Right now, if you have Medicaid or Medicare, you ride for half-price, right? But you can't buy like a longer-term pass, it's like one-ride passes or one-use, like half-price?
So that depends on the program.
Okay.
So we have, um, I'm going to get them mixed up between Medicaid and Medicare, I'm sorry. Uh, there's a non-emergency medical program that is available for those, I believe it's Medicare. Um, so we can point them in that direction to call them for transportation. Um, if they are Medicare, then they fall under our, um, half-fair program. Um, so it's, it's this connection that we're focusing on is the access pass, just to get them to someplace where we can learn more about them and fit them into these areas where they can get other transportation options.
So is someone able to look at like the thirty-day pass and say, look, I'm on Medicare? Does that then have price, or can they only use like single-use half-price?
Um, I believe that the thirty-ride pass, or the thirty-day pass would also be available for them.
Okay, I couldn't find that information on the website, it said like.
We've never done that one at a discounted rate, so usually, um.
See, that's what I was hoping for, like a longer-term pass, if we could show.
So when they come to us and they're on our half-fair program, then we give them a card, and it has their photo ID and their name on it. It's, um, coded for that program, so the fare box will recognize it. So someone with a Medicare pass, they're going to swipe it through the fare box, and it's going to say half-fair. And so they're only going to owe that, so it recognizes them.
Okay.
Um, the same thing, we have a gold card as well, and that works the same way.
I'm just struggling with the idea of, I mean, we have done single-use passes for years, and we always heard complaints about it, so it doesn't necessarily seem like a new program to me, it's just packaged in a different way. And I have a hard time, um, like when we're talking about like the blessing boxes, or who's going to hand these out, I can foresee someone, like the city purchasing a hundred passes and sticking it in the box, and one person taking them all, or for, you know, they blow down the street and no one knows if they've actually been used or not been used.
And probably we put a hundred in there.
Well, I'm, but.
This is the way to get people to where they can get the pass that's appropriate for them.
And, I'm sorry, because you said seventy-five cents, but you also told Bill point six-six-seven.
Yeah.
So the city buying in bulk would not pay the full?
Yeah, so the city, so previously it was, there's, we can set aside this amount of money to buy these passes. So I see that as a bulk purchase, so it's point six-six-seven, and so that.
How many do you have to purchase to qualify for a bulk, kinda, do you have a number that?
It starts with our fifteen-ride pass, that's what it's based off of.
But do you have to buy like a hundred, five hundred passes, like to get the bulk rate?
That would qualify, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So are you saying sixty-six cents?
Yeah, it's point six-six-seven cents, yeah, it's like fifteen divided by seventy-five cents.
Oh, okay.
But if social services go now and buy a stack of pass-it, like if Christian Hill buys their stack of passes, do they get that rate already? So we're not really looking at anything new. We, we already have the ability to purchase these passes and get people where they need to go.
The idea is that since we are not, um, since we don't currently have partners that are interested in paying for the entire route, that we need something to, um, bridge the, bridge the getting, targeting people and getting them up to where they need to go. Um, and this is a way to do it. And so if it's repackaging under the same, um, we can call it that, we can call it anything we want to, but it's, um, a way to get people to where they need to go. And so, um, and then as we're working through this with the agencies and with the bus service, there's been a lot of talk about what the next steps are and how, how that can, um, make a big difference, so.
It's just to get through, right?
Pardon?
Because it's just, so this is like a temporary?
I don't think it's temporary.
Well, not temporary, but to help with the.
This is the stopgap.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is.
To help with the process.
This is how you get the people to where they.
And so it's not, um, it's, you know, it's a single-ride pass, that's what it is, or a two-ride pass. But I think it's more towards the effort of getting the information out there and. and finding the right distribution methods. Because so far, it's been, we can't touch these people, and that's it. And I think maybe we need to try.
It just seems like our stopgap to finding something different or better or something that's going to work is going back to what we were doing three years ago that everyone said, well, this isn't working, so I don't.
If, if there are people that wanna pay for the whole route, they can pay for it. But the success has, has bred more expense, and this is a way to target the people that need the service to get where they need to go. And not just to Hazel's House, but to other places that they need to get to a doctor appointment or wherever they need to go.
I don't mean to be antagonistic, but I do have a question, kind of, can you help me by solving my ignorance? You're running that line from downtown to Hazel House. It's gonna cost you to run that, no matter what, no matter how many people are on it. Why is it the fact that there are more people on it costing you more money?
So that's just one of our funding mechanisms, it's part of our local contribution. So, our riders are contributing to the system just like everybody else is.
So the ride costs a lot more than the seventy-five cents, the ride costs.
Yeah, that's already a discounted rate. On, on, I think I calculated it, it was close to six dollars for that route. There's some routes that are close to twenty-eight dollars to actually ride it.
I guess what I'm saying is that that route is not causing you more money to run than it does, you know, you could run one person on it, you could run a hundred persons on it, it's still gonna cost you the same amount of money to run it. So how does that, how does that, I realize that you need to have, you need to run a business. We, in city government, we have limited funds also. And you need to have a source of income, I totally agree with that. And I know how you measure it, it's by people who are using it, pay for it. But I guess what I'm suggesting is, this has become an issue of being free, going from being free because of the increased use. How does that, how does that affect your bottom line?
Yeah, so there's, there's two things. We have our hours of service that we put in, and we have our fares. And so those are the two means through which we collect from our system. And so if someone wants to come in and subsidize either one or the other for any particular group of people, then we work with them to do that. Similar to the veteran program, they wanna subsidize the route, the fares for the veterans, then they commit into that. That's, it's our funding mechanism, it's part of the rider's support of the system.
So is part of the difficulty for you that, say, in a month, there were five-hundred veterans that rode this bus on that route, and none of them swiped the pass, but they could've? And then you could've received more funding for those particular riders?
No, because it wouldn't have, so when they swipe their veteran pass through the fare box, that's gonna trigger a report, so we run a report and we can see all the veterans that rode. If they chose to pay in a different method, they're not gonna be on that report, so we're not getting.
But I'm, but I'm saying, like, if they had swiped for being a veteran, right? And they didn't, does that affect your funding?
If they swipe as a veteran, do they get money back? Do you all get money back on the backend?
When they swipe it, it registers as a veteran ride.
And then you receive funding?
So we report that to them, and they.
Give you reimbursed, yeah. So ostensibly, if, say, five-hundred of them rode the bus and none of them swiped, that is money you're losing. So this is how you're making.
It's billed to us instead of the veteran.
It means that the people who are partnering to pay for this fare were paying for.
So there's a less diverse pot of funding.
A lot of people who were not going to where. So we got to a point where the partners were not interested in paying anymore because they said it was too much. So the city was willing to ante in, but we had other groups that said it's too much. So, then you have to find a different way. Or recycle, or recycle an old one.
It's not a new way, it's, it's right back to where we were three years ago, four years ago.
It's a new way of looking at it, of trying to have wider distribution and have two passes and have an educational piece attached to it so that people can kind of learn while they're riding the bus.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Yeah, so again, it's just an idea. I threw it out there because we needed something, so we haven't had further discussions or to mold this. I think this is probably a good first step and start to do something, but as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your.
Thank you. All right, that closes, what's this actually called? That closes our presentation. Now we are open to our public portion.
Ben's stuck around for a little bit.
Ben, did you say you wanted to?
Yeah, he said he wanted to speak.
No, all right, then, this closes our public portion. Now on to our items for discussion. An ordinance annuling a twelve-foot alley in Lawnwood, I look towards City Attorney.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This proposed ordinance would confirm a prior annulment by the City of Morgantown of a twelve-foot alley running between Callan Avenue and Madigan Avenue. It's on the site of a former church property now purchased by a new church group wishing to construct a new building. The prior ordinance of the city annulled this alley, but the title and the body of the ordinance were inconsistent in that the, the title referenced reserving some subsurface utility rights in that right-of-way, while the body did not. So in practical effect, this, this right-of-way has been annulled since that ordinance was adopted and recorded. But in order to remove any potential inconsistencies in the title, the property owner is requesting that the city adopt this ordinance to confirm the prior annulment and that specifically, there's no need to retain that public right-of-way or no attempt to retain that public right-of-way for utility purposes. The, the ordinance and the attachments have been provided to the Department of Engineering and Public Works. The Utility Board has confirmed they have no intention to use this property in the future. And so it's recommended that Council move this to your agenda and adopt the ordinance.
So it's just confirming something that exists?
That's correct.
All right. I think I talked about this a little bit yesterday in our neighborhood meeting. They had no more.
Good to hear.
It is a hundred-and-sixty-foot alley, twelve-foot wide, just to point out that it is a big piece of land. Just to clarify, because it's a little misleading when you read this.
Right, I think also, the alley hasn't existed in a while.
That's right, yes. This, this one-hundred-and-sixty-foot-long piece of a twelve-foot-wide alley was annulled in nineteen sixty-eight.
Formerly the church that was there, yeah. All right.
Move it to the agenda.
And.
Wait, and then, before we adjourn. I have an announcement.
I, I didn't, I don't even have the gavel in my hand.
Move to.
If our mayor, I believe, has an announcement, they're like, may?
There's been a request for a look at our charter, and we're responding with a workshop for a charter review, including all of council. The idea is that council would provide ideas about items in the charter that they might want to discuss, and they provide those to our attorney. And then we give the attorney time to process those requests. And then we schedule initially one meeting before our council meeting, promptly thereafter the time for the attorney to process. And so we would have an initial meeting that would be anticipated, like, from five-thirty to seven o'clock before a council meeting. And then, and then we would give time for the attorney to process whatever requests came in then and discussion. And then we would have at least one other follow-up meeting and any other meetings that we needed to, to sort through this request. I just wanted to make that announcement.
All right, thank you.
Move to adjourn?
Oh, you have a.
There's no second.
I was asked to bring up this evening, as we, as I have alluded to many times, Morgantown Community Resources has been in discussions with Bartlett House and other organizations to try to run the triage shelter at Hazel's House of Hope. I had a call today with a few other board members of Morgantown Community Resources as well as Mark Phillips of Catholic Charities of West Virginia. And those discussions have reached a point where Catholic Charities is comfortable being named as the entity that we have been discussing this with publicly. We still have some things to work out, mainly funding, I believe. But we, we are looking forward to Morgantown Community Resources and Bartlett House partnering with Catholic Charities to ensure that tentatively by the end of the summer, we will have a, a triage shelter back open at H3. And my bringing this up today is pertinent because Mark Phillips of Catholic Charities, he's their CEO and president, he would like to be added to our first meeting of July agenda to come and speak about that proposal to council. Maybe just as correspondence or a presentation if possible, so. I don't know when the agenda meeting was happening, so I wanted to make sure that this was brought up this evening, tomorrow. Then, very timely.
On that note, actually, Wheezy asked to make an announcement over speakerphone. Wheezy there, hold on.
Can you hear me, John?
Now you're on speaker, you're good.
Okay, I just wanna real quick announce that Wilds Hill Highland Park Neighborhood Association, we're gonna be doing a reboot and getting it started again. It's just Thursday, June twenty-seventh at 6:00 PM at the picnic table area. And we're all excited to get this going that hasn't been up since COVID. And we look forward to it. That was my only announcement.
All right, thank you. All right.
I already motioned. You don't need a second.
Second, there we go, and we are adjourned.